Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order. This is a regular meeting of Barstown City Council for August 1st. I'm gonna kinda go out of order just at the start of this meeting to take care of some administrative business, but I'm going down to the mayor's report and I'd like to make a recommendation that I've made a recommendation to you all to approve the appointment of Mary Riley as position of city clerk. She's been acting city clerk in the last two weeks, so I'd like to start entertaining motion to approve Mary. I think I told you all earlier that Mary had previously cross-trained for the city clerk's job under Mayor Shekels, and then in the last two months she's been cross-training for this position. It came a little faster than we thought it might, but fortunately she was scheduled for training two weeks ago with Lexington Kentucky City Clerks Association, so she's been through a week of training there and she's been through two really busy weeks training, on-the-jog training at City Hall. So that's my endorsement.
Mayor by order?
Yes, sir.
And since her name is already up there, I would like to recommend Mary Riley for the position of city clerk.
Here we have a motion, we have a second.
I'd like to second that, Mayor.
Second, council knows, is there any other discussion? All in favor then, seems about saying aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Welcome Mary to the new position as Barstown City Clerk. And to make it official, we need to swear you in, so join me up front. Some of your family members are here, we'd like them to come forward and join Mary for the swearing in.
I have my mother, my husband, and my two daughters, or part of the pack of kids.
You have to get somebody else to take a picture. They've grown up?
They have grown up.
Somebody out there to take a picture with your mother.
Yeah. I don't think they care that much, Mary.
I know.
Okay, raise your right hand for Ms. Riley. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth? And be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof, that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the position of city clerk according to law? If you do further solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you being a citizen of the state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you accepted the challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending you, so help you God.
I do.
Welcome, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, under the first item of business is the update on mobile food vendor ordinance. I think Ted Butler, our attorney, has some comments to make on the update.
Yes, Mayor, at the first meeting in July, we had some discussion, I think it was based on the fact that we had somebody here that was trying to get their mobile food vendor license and was interested in some of the amendments we were making, and they had asked about could they do, I think what they wanted to do was have a grill, a separate cooking base, I think, just a gas grill. And they had been told, no, you couldn't do that, and we couldn't at that point just put our finger on what the problem was with doing that. And what Mary is nice enough to do is to link this to the ordinance to your all's iPads, and there's a section in there, Section H, under miscellaneous regulations, that says every mobile food vendor vehicle shall be totally self-contained with its own portable water supply, its own electric indoor gas generator. And the key here is that it's to be totally self-contained. My understanding, although I was not here when this was drafted and adopted, that this was intended to allow food trucks, like you see more commonly now in places, and to differentiate it from events like the cookouts that you see periodically for people that do it for fundraisers and things like that, and those are at different ordinance and a different limitation. This is aimed at businesses that do not have the, a site, a location, a permanent location. They're, you know, they're temporary, they're mobile, and so that's why this was drafted the way it was. It was aimed, I think it was actually aimed at the Crave Mobile, quite frankly, to allow that. Of course, the, and I kind of recall that some of the discussion at that time was that you have, and probably the reason there's limitation is that you, these are in competition with businesses that have located here, built buildings here, have regular payroll, pay property tax, utilities, and so there's some limitation with that, and so the reason, I just brought this up because I asked Mary to put it on the agenda because you all had expressed some interest, I thought, about, you know, why was this the way it was, or was it truly a limitation? And the answer is yes, and if it's something that you all would like to look at changing, we'd have to draft a change to this particular section, if that's something that you all would desire to do. So the person that appeared, the couple that appeared a couple of meetings ago, they, it was truly, it was true that they cannot do a grill because that's not self-contained.
Now, if they were to take part of a festival, that's different.
That's a different, my understanding is that's a different ordinance and allows for, you know, and of course you can only do it so often and things like that.
Well, this came up because some of the businesses that had brick and mortar were concerned that someone with a mobile business, say like the Crave Mobile, for example, if they came, when they first came to town, if they wanted to set up every day or every week in a certain spot, it's like a regular location, and not have to do the same, under the same rules and regulations that a Wendy's would give or something like that. So that's why it was like 14 days, you're gonna stay in one place 14 days, then you gotta move, so they wouldn't be setting up like in a set location. But some people would let them sit there, you know, all summer, all year, whatever. So that's the way it was drafted, the way it was, every 14 days you gotta move.
The concern that I have with that particular paragraph would be the word that, or that statement, self-contained, could be, could have two definitions. Self-contained, meaning the power supplies, the way I read this paragraph, means that you can't derive or get your utilities from anything else except your self-contained vehicle. I think it would mean, it would take on a different meaning having the outside grill being inside the vehicle as being self-contained. I think we're talking about two different definitions here, possibly. Because this reads to me that self-contained would mean you cannot obtain your utilities from any outside source, nothing to do with all of your equipment being self-contained in the vehicle.
From what I've gathered, again, I wasn't there when it was drafted, but the intent was to make it a, like a food truck, which is, you know, all activities, and that's partly, I think, health regulations too.
Well, and the only reason I bring that up is that I would think that that limitation may be more of a nuisance possibly than allowing them to plug their utilities into the property owner's power supply, because then you have a generator or something that's noisy, running, running all the time, as opposed to being able to power this food truck from the property owner that has allowed them to be there for that short amount of time. So I think that, in my opinion, we need to look at it as a change, possibly a change to that paragraph for that reason alone, and then I don't think it's clear enough really that self-contained to me, the way I read this, means, means the power supply or self-contained but meaning that you cannot get your utilities.
I'm not saying the kitchen, the appliances, the utilities.
Yes, and it states that, you know, it has to be powered by its own electric and/or gas generator supply, so to me that's what that pertains to, is meaning that you can't pull your utilities from something else, and personally I think that you should be able to do that because it would, it would probably be a less intrusive application if you didn't have to have a generator.
Correct. Tim, maybe we need to do some more research and clarification on that paragraph.
What we realized, I, in fact, I was talking about, you may run into health department issues.
That's where, that's where he was trying to clarify, he said, his understanding was that would not be permitted in a mobile food vending operation.
The health department would not, I don't think, allow that.
Well, they would, like, when you have a craft fair or...
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that. Commercial. It can have an outside grill.
And then you'll, you have to have a pot of water to clean your dishes, you have to have a refrigerator, sink, and all that stuff. But, you know, whether you put it out into the water hose or a water outlet, we gotta use a pot of water hose.
Well, Jessica brought up a good point too, in that we can't really allow sewer and water, you know, to be something that's outside that contained system. They would have to have their own tank that would contain that, you know, their gray water or whatever.
Black water.
Yeah, and the black water, if that applied.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't let that down the swamp, that would probably be a health violation.
Otherwise, they'd be trying to, how do you even meter that if they're gonna be getting it from a separate water source if it's not self-contained?
Well, and I think we're kind of circling around the issue, and that is that a food truck is regulated, and from what I understand, fairly tightly regulated, has to have certain things like you all are talking about, but if you start saying, oh, well, you know, we can just start, it's coming in pieces and we can start setting it up, first of all, I think, you know, you're looking at violations of various regulations and creating problems, and then also you've got the whole separate issue, which is, then you've got somebody who doesn't have, as Councilman Shekels has kind of alluded to, that you've got somebody without much of an investment in the community that is able to undercut businesses that have a substantial investment in the community.
But from my experience with these, with everybody, mostly these outside vendors like this now, most of their units are self-contained, and the one thing that puts the biggest dam on them is the health department comes by and expects every one of these things, and if they're not up to code like they should be, then they don't let them operate. So where we're concerned so much about hookups and stuff like that, when it comes to the other stuff, as far as the outside grill and stuff like that, the health people, they come by and they make sure that everything is up to code, just from the bottom of the base, but, you know, when we first started out, before we had these artists and different things, people kind of, they wanted to, but now it's not like that. Angie and Holly down to the health department, they come down, they put their seal of inspection on everything now, so that eliminates a lot of this, what they can do, what they can't do outside the mobile units.
I think into Jessica's point, that's an excellent point, Councilman, because, but it's still kind of muddy to me as to what self-contained actually means here. I think that you could probably skirt around it, this particular paragraph, so we may have to just modify it and to include no extra permaces or items that are sitting outside the structure, not merely just referring to the electric or cable or waste water, if that's, if that's the intent.
So Tim, are you okay with maybe a little bit of clarification on that paragraph?
Yep.
Any other discussion on this?
Well, I've got a question, not even the mobile food, but not the ordinance. Patty Barry with terrorism is wanting to know how she needs to get the information in order to make sure they're collecting restaurant times. I just need some direction on, I don't know what the process, I don't, Mary told me today they have a checklist they have to go through, and I've got this part of the checklist, but I guess they're not giving their information to terrorism.
You're talking about the vendors in the food court during the bourbon festival?
No, the mobile food vendors.
Well, I'd like to know if you... They have a city license, and I think we need to use that as...
Should we just go ahead and send the information to her?
Yeah, because like at the arson crafts, at the arson craft fair, everybody that they have their, they're registered with the mainstream, they bring by your tax uses bill, and everybody, everybody gets one of those. Now, whether they, everybody turns them in or not, I don't know, but they do issue those to...
She wants a way to notify so they understand that they, on a monthly basis, they need to pay that in, so that people are sent on to terrorism.
We saw the hospital, they issue permits on the hospital permit and whatever the contact information is on the application, splice it over.
I have to read back some of the information, but yeah, I think what she needed in order to contact them.
Yeah, they'll just think the contact information, maybe your permits, a little know.
I just didn't know if it was part of the process, she had asked me about it. It had nothing, it's not part of the notification process at all, so, and it could be generated out of my department or out of yours, Tracy.
That's for private vendors and stuff like that, it's a state issue for them, so I don't know. It's a state, Delaware Kentucky.
Part of the state application.
Yeah, it's a USIS form, or is, so, you know, where you can say...
Well, I think because it was advertised, that she's equally the information coming through the Houston's office, but I just, I don't know, I guess the mobile food vendors aren't doing anything as far as you can use them, I think, because it's industrial. But I guess she's not getting anything from any of the vendors, since it's become a hot topic.
You have to work with her on, you can figure out business license.
Oh, well, once we initiate that, I'll just send the information over to her then. Okay.
Any other discussion on this? All right, so to number B, I guess Jeff Neil's or Oliver, or anybody that have any adjustments.
Guess I'll start with the little summary, page down by 11, summary page. For those of you that were here on the council back last February, February 16th, when we had done this before, we essentially lowered the basic cable television rate by $3-ish, you know, explain the ish, and raised the internet by $3-ish, I'll explain that ish as well, but we feel it's time to do that again, and so the first block that you see is what we did for the rates effective February 1st, 2016, and we were going to lower the television bill by $3, and it was timed exactly with some increases coming from mobile broadcasters, so that paid away some of the $3, that's the ish of the TV part, and we were gonna make it an exact push, that second line we see, under retail change, $0 change, so if we had both internet and cable, the goal then was to make it completely transparent from this ordinance. That made us raise the internet $3.30, and that's just the way the math worked out, to counter that 2.64 because of the 20% discount when they have both, 20% discount on their internet service. Contrast that with, this time, we're just using straight $3, so in the second block, effective September 2017, we'll lower the TV only, the retail change of $3 negative there, the internet would go up $3, internet only, customers would see a $3 increase. Those folks with both are gonna see yet an additional 60 cents because of the bundle discount. It's a little different approach from last time. So let me get into why we're doing this. Television services, we're losing customers, it's not bleeding by any means, but the trend is towards more streaming. Internet services are growing, you can see the count difference from even just December of 15, the numbers of TV only, both, and internet onlys. If you just wanna focus on our retails, for instance, TV only 18, I'm sorry, in December of 15, we had 22, 29 television customers. Contrast that today with 1875, that's just the onlys. Both is pretty steady, we had 48, 48 back in December of 15, this year it's at 48, 22. So it shows you that that bundling is powerful, that discount's powerful, and if, you know, we don't, if we keep this retail rate fair, and I'll explain that here in just a second, then it tends to make that both service kind of steep. The internet onlys were 2014 in December of 15, and today they're 23, 15. So the trend is going that way, and here's why we're having this change twice. In 2003, when we did a basic service, everything above that was pretty much the programming charge. When we did a basic service in 2003, it was $12.95, and there was no, there was no programming charge, that was our fixed cost recovery, it was maybe 30 cents a program. Today, the programming costs for basic service, primarily because of the broadcasters, is $8.24. So, and so keep in mind, all of our fixed cost recovery for the department in '03, the internet was pretty naysaying at then, it was young, didn't have a lot of customers, it was $13, that was our fixed cost recovery in 2003. In 2016, when we did this, February of 2016, our customer charge was still roughly $13, our fixed cost recovery from the television customer was 13, and it wasn't really any fixed cost recovery ever built into the internet rates. We didn't change the internet rates since, prior to that point, they were the same as they've been since 2001. So it was time for internet customers to pay a portion of the fixed cost recovery, thus we proposed lowering TV by 3, roughly from 13 to 10, and raising internet by $3. And that's why that ordinance was styled as television service or basic service is $10 plus programming, and that's the rate we live on today, and it automatically increased last January up to the 8.24. That's not a rate that we're proposing, that's what we're paying today in the ordinance, the very first modified line of the ordinance. So today, we're proposing yet another $3, so that would lower television service or basic service to $7 plus programming, and it would increase the internet by the corresponding $3. So if you think of it as where we were positioned when we first started, and internet wasn't really contributing anything to fixed cost recovery, cable trucks, fuel, cable personnel, any of that. We went from 13 to 10, and internet went from 0 to 3. In this move, TV's gonna go from 10 to 7, and internet's gonna go from 3.30 actually to 6.30. So it's about equal, and we think that's a prudent move to make, given the trends we're seeing.
But you give them horse.
And we're gonna increase the speeds.
Speed.
Right.
Really, you know, really getting the benefit.
Yeah, yeah, the budget takes about a $23,000 hit, but it's built in already, we already built this into our numbers. Larry Hammond would always ask me, on any kind of move we make with retail rates, with any services, how do we compare it to other communities? And if you wanna take a look at these two charts, the first one that I call your attention to, it's got the taller bars on it, it's called non-bundled internet rates projected of course for September 1st. And it's got us, Frankfurt Plant Board, Murray Electric System, Williamstown, Glasgow, and Russellville for comparison, and we combined the groupings of like speeds, and you can see even after this change, that we're, we're the lowest provider in this entire group. These are comparable speeds, I mean, R10, in Russellville's case, they have a 20, that's their lowest, and Williamstown has a 20. But in the next tier up, the 25 to 30, we're the dominant rate value still amongst all of our municipal revenue, so across all of these tiers that we're offering. The second chart is a price per megabit per second, that makes it even more than Apple one than Apple. In our lowest tier, we're not the best, nor are we the worst, we're kind of in the middle of that group, at $3.13 a meg, you just take the price and divide it by the speed, and you get this cost per megabit per second. In all of the other tiers, upper tiers...
What do you think, Jeff, speaking?
On this chart, sorry, this chart is the value, it's kind of like your gas mileage, you're just banging for your buck. So in our low tier, we're $3.13 per megabit per second, but in the very next tier up, we're $1.45 per megabit, and then as it goes up, it's more, you get more value.
More value.
Yeah. So to answer a Larry-type question, is it, are we still competitive? We're more than competitive, in fact, we're a little bit behind the curve if we don't do this.
You have to follow along that same line with Larry's question, how does that place us with the surrounding communities after the change with the cable side of it? How do we compare, we should, we should be well below the standard or the average rate?
Yeah.
We don't have a chart of that, right?
I don't have that, no. We were, we were amongst the lowest, but that's a flat line.
It's much more competitive among...
Everybody's being hammered by the cost of program. I think you pointed out earlier today that when you move...
Oh, '03, my cable was $28.53 a month.
Yeah, not $65. And if we've done anything since then, we've took $3 off of that, and so everything else is driven by the cost of program. If we go down to the rates before and after, includes the television impact, just strictly the television impact, this last column is August of 17, and so programming, as I stated, was $8.24, it's been that since January. You'll see the change to the $7 vertical customer charge, making basic city rates again, 15.24. You add expanded basic, some of that $3.60 is eroded by the August increases in ESPN, and I have one more renewal that I don't recall, but Eric tracks all those rates, so they're gonna kick in anyway due to the automatic clause, and this will help take some of the sting out of it, and give us some, keep some of our powder dry for January, because this is the year we renew with the broadcasters. You may wanna really seriously consider setting an example with one of them, I think WHS was our hardcore hole out last time, maybe test those waters this time, it's all free with an antenna. We can, we could consider even putting antennas up for people. Why I put, why I let the gun continue to be put out there.
They also have to be looking at the streaming video and how it's hurting the municipal systems also, and they have to be...
The broadcasters?
Yes.
Both of these mayors have had through those negotiations, you know, as Bill Lamb said, the days of promoting your business on our backs are over. I remember reading that email right here in these ten years. So, but anyway, that's just another bonus that we'll have a little bit of headroom when that happens. So we strongly recommend this move, and we spent a lot of time researching it. That's all I have.
With all the increase in speed, like, if you were the 10 million bucks, you actually get a $2 reduction.
Yeah, people would typically move the speed and not the price. Yeah, people would typically move the speed and not the price. We've done speed increases before. In this particular instance, both are going up, and then folks are free to move around wherever they perceive their next best value.
So are you saying, so we have customers at tiers, and it's like tier one, tier two, tier three, tier four?
Right.
So if someone is currently 10 megabytes per second, they're going to automatically go to 25 megabytes?
They often don't. You'd be surprised. I mean, we see a little movement after each one of these ordinances, each one of these moves, particularly when the prices have changed, but the speed increased. You'd think there would be a lot of reversion to the previous tier.
But they'll automatically be put in 25 megabyte tier.
If we keep the money the same and raise the rate, I'm sorry. Yeah, if we keep the money the same and raise the speed. Now, you got, it's one or the other. People complain both ways. But we figured the best way to ever do that, when it's time to increase speeds for any of the tiers, is to go ahead and give them the more speed, and they're free to downgrade to the previous speed to add enterprise.
That's like I said, next time, because they automatically.
It's a good question.
The 10 ones get automatically to 25.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for me?
Okay, is that all we need on the cable internet rate adjustments? Because then you also.
That's all I have for that, yes, sir.
So we got the ordinance.
It doesn't have to be read today. We've had two reads in ours. Want to sleep on it. Okay, thank you.
Well, it has been published before.
The end of August and August for September 1.
There's five Tuesdays in August.
And I can have it sent to them.
Yeah, there's August 1st.
John, I can have it sent to them in advance, ready for, to hold the trigger.
Yeah. My team said we have five, two days.
It should be okay.
All right, we'll move into the council minutes for the July 25th meeting. Everybody's had a chance to look at, we can approve that by activation, S R D changes. Or corrections.
Mayor, I agree with unanimous consent, but I wasn't here, so I won't vote.
Okay. Am I okay with unanimous consent then?
No.
All right. Council comments? Anyone have anything they need to bring before the council this evening? Administrative, Tim?
Yeah, Mayor, I had, the mayor asked me to look at making a couple of changes in the municipal order in 2016, 17, which is the city council on travel training policy. And what I will do, and probably the next meeting is have a, I will probably send this out beforehand so you can look at it, but some proposed changes that would do two things. One would be to strike the provision that says, in order to provide information to citizens regarding these expenditures, the expense reports will be published in the minutes of the next council meeting. That would, I think the mayor's opinion is it's not really that interesting, and it would strike that from the agenda, so we wouldn't have that on the agenda cluttering that. And then the other thing would be to add a provision that would allow for the cost of, not required, but allow for the cost of attending the annual Kentucky League of Cities Conference in the fall of each year, that would be covered by the administration's budget for travel, lodging, and entertainment. And so I would expect that, you all should expect that probably here fairly quickly, that I will have that in some language that you can look at and comment on. And if there's some changes that you'd like to see, we can make those and get that into effect here fairly quickly.
Any questions, Tim, on that? I just felt like I would put that on the agenda, you know, put that on the agenda for engineering, police department, and all that stuff. It just seems like it'd be a waste of time to be dealing with that posting of the travel.
It's all sorts of building materials, all of those.
It just seemed odd that that was there that way versus all the others in departments. Okay, anything else, Tim, or anybody else? Anybody in the staff got anything on administrative at this point?
Yes, sir.
Jessica, you want to go to the street resurfacing bid tab?
Yes, every year we put out a street resurfacing bid for our annual resurfacing for city streets. And this year, the bid came in, Mago Construction submitted a price. When you include the state price contract for haul and material, the overall bid price for the price per tonne that coming in at $69 per tonne. That compares, it's up a little bit from last year. I believe last year our price was $66.50 per tonne, so we're up a little bit. But still, in the grand scheme of things, that's still a little bit lower than we had been three and four and five years ago, where we were over $71 and 70, I almost said $74 per tonne at one point in time. So I would recommend that we award Mago Construction for the total ton asphalt price of $69 per tonne to be approved.
Okay. Questions, Jessica?
Are there quantity, are we locked in a certain quantity, or we're just going to estimate what we want to use?
Right, but I've put together the tonnage and how much edge key and milling that's also included in the overall bid. I guess there, I should also mention that their edge key price was $20 per foot, and their milling per tonne was $50 per tonne, was the bid that they provided for that. So I've created, based on the budgeted amount allocated for resurfacing, a certain tonnage. And I've kind of got those rough estimates on what that would be. So we can adjust that if we have a little money left over, because there's always contingency. Sometimes it takes a little less than what I estimate, so we can do a little bit more. So that's kind of what I, it's a little bit flexible, but that's how much I had budgeted. But since the price came in a little bit more, I might have to pull it back a little bit, but that's basically how we do it.
Are you referring to that 4.34 number as the budget number?
Yes, that's, well, I think there's around, about, it's about 4.34 is what I had budgeted. So I may have to pull a small street out in order to compensate for the edge key and the milling, but.
We do have a request for some.
Yes, that's also why I left it in there, that the tonnage could change, because we've put in a discretionary funds request to the governor's office, to the state, to see if they would, with a submittal, on what streets we'd like to have paved as well. And that way, it would almost, would be an additional about $175,000 is what I requested, since there are several industrial streets and heavily trafficked streets that need paving that are going to take a big chunk. Like, for instance, Wilson Parkway is in need of paving. Nutter Drive is in need of paving, and Chambers Boulevard. All of those are really high-traffic streets and not necessarily narrow, or not narrow, and they're not short. So they take a lot of tonnage. Plus, we try and put a little extra thickness on those streets as well because of the loading that they receive. So that's also why I had the tonnage could be depending on funds.
If we get some of that money, we don't know, like, we got $50,000 that would help us.
Right, we can kind of allocate the tonnage.
I guess I'm just, we're not obligated or something.
Right, this is to give them an estimate to how much.
So the milling part of it, Jessica, is subjected to how much stripping that you're going to have to do off the streets when they're resurfaced? So that's a subjective number. You mentioned the amount that we have to pay them for milling.
Right, we have to pay per tonne that they charge us to pull off. And that already includes what they charge back to us for recycling. That is the net charge, is how much, like a $50 per tonne. But we don't have, thankfully, we don't have to mill every street. There's only about 386 tonnes that we need. Not every street with ditch lines, you don't generally mill a street that has ditch sections. And there's some sections that are curb and gutter that could take another overlay before we need to go and mill down, so we've kind of incorporated that into.
That's incorporated into the overall number though? Is that also an estimate, how much you have to mill and the tonnage?
Yeah, that is an estimate. But that's also including like about 11% contingency, so to give us some play. The total with everything, based on the tonnages and the streets that I had estimated, the overall price to do the streets with the prices that came in for the bid would be a grand total of $467,995 to do the tonnage that was in the bid in edge key and mill.
One more question, what is edge key?
Edge key is when you transition, say we're milling, surfacing a street, and it abuts another street. We'll do an edge key cut at the intersection of the street so that the pavements line up, and we're not feathering it out to nothing. We used to not do that, and they would tend to rattle and not hold up fully well. So that edge key creates a nice clean line, where you get a full thickness of pavement.
Right, if you have concrete curving, does that count also as edge key? If you have concrete curving that you have to mill or meet and go flush with?
No, we don't usually have to edge key, cut into the edge of the curbing. But it also does, if there's a section where we started the previous year, we went a half block to half, you know, a block, then we would edge key at that transition point. But predominantly, it's where we intersect a major road that's heavily traffic. So if we're intersecting a state highway, it makes a much better transition at that intersection.
Jessica, to accept this bid, would we be accepting the bid for, I think, the surface, edge key, milling, and then the price per tonne? Would that be accurate?
Yes, we would essentially.
Because you were talking about just accepting the $69, but would we not also be accepting?
Yes, the edge key, the items two and three.
Oh, two and three.
The total of 69, and then two and three.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to approve a motion then to approve the bid as a resurfacing Mago for asphalt $69 a tonne, edge key of $20 a tonne, L A. of $50 a tonne, is that correct, Jessica?
Twenty dollars a foot, I think.
So move. We have a motion, a second.
Second.
A second, Councilman Copley. Any other discussion? All in favor, the Speaker, I would say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carried, thank you. Okay, Ray, you want to talk us through the classification compensation plan? Second reading, I guess Tim has to read it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, summary. Ordinance number B 2017 Classification Compensation Plan. An ordinance amending and adopted as amending, an ordinance styled, an ordinance created, a classification compensation plan. This ordinance amends ordinance B 2016-10, B 2016-15, and Chapter 35 Employment Policies. The classification plan and compensation plan of the municipal code by amending the number of authorized positions, their title and pay grade, and setting the ranges for pay grades for city employees for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and subsequent years. The amendments and additions reflecting the number of positions, title, and pay grade respectively are: One, exempt human resources director slash add risk manager. One twenty-two, one, do away with executive assistant to the mayor. Add assistant city clerk, one oh eight. Delete one risk and facilities manager, one eleven. Add exempt to preservation coordinator, one fourteen. Add one groundskeeper slash facilities manager, one oh nine. Delete one groundskeeper. Add maintenance worker, one admin. Strike one oh eight, add one oh one. Strike one janitor, part-time, one oh one. Strike five, add six, customer service representative, one two or three, one oh three to one oh five. One, add administrative assistant slash to property room technician, part-time. Delete one oh four, add one oh six. Add one administrative assistant, one oh four. Delete one, add two, to recreation assistant, part-time, one oh two. Add one staff engineer, one fifteen. Strike one, add two, IT support specialist, one, one oh four, or IT support specialist, two, one oh eight. The change, change the pay grade scale as follows. All minimum wages are raised by 3%, and all maximums shall be 1.5 times the minimum. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict adhered with or repealed to the extent of such conflict, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect following the publication and summary as required by law. I certify that this was prepared by me, Tim Butler, City Attorney.
Okay, this is a second reading. The motion and the second, I guess, the call for a big major vote.
So moved.
Motion, Councilman Williams, that's second.
Second.
Second of the council votes, is there any discussion? I know, I think Greg well is with you all on our last days. Everyone understands this. No discussion, then all in favor, Speaker, I would say aye. Once our individual will go with something.
Aye.
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 Thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, motion is carried. The classification compensation plan is going to be passed then. All right, the next one under personnel is the municipal order number 2017-10. Greg, you want to walk us through that?
Yes, sir, that's the municipal order where it just, the job descriptions for the new positions that you just approved and repealing the positions that were struck from the compensation, the classification compensation.
The base provision, remember from last week, we consolidated like five positions into three, and then supported them with some admin. I think the actual overall savings on the payroll is going to be closer to about $60,000. The benefits may be costing seven. So even by adding this total of five positions with two admin support people, one for Philip and one for city clerk's office, the net savings is going to be more like $60,000, $70,000 overall payroll benefits. That consolidation is going to save us some labor, and I also think it's going to make us more efficient in the operation of those departments, so.
Anyway. Do we need to read that?
I'll run with it, man. Municipal order in 2017-10, municipal order amending the job descriptions for the city of Barstown originally established in municipal order number M 2015-16, and amended in municipal orders M 2016-04, M 2016-09, M 2016-19, and M 2016-20. Whereas the city of Barstown has created new positions as listed that will require new job descriptions, administration human resources director, risk manager, administration groundskeepers slash facilities manager, administration citizen city clerk, administration maintenance worker, one slash admin, police, administrative assistant slash property room technician, part-time, parks and recreation, administrative assistant, engineering staff engineer. And whereas the job descriptions for the established positions as listed below will be repealed in their entirety, executive assistant to the mayor, risk and facilities manager, groundskeeper, janitor, part-time, now therefore be ordered by the city of Barstown, Kentucky, that the new job descriptions attached here too be adopted in full to represent the true and accurate definition for the position available as an employee of the city of Barstown, and that the repealed job descriptions attached here too be eliminated in their entirety. And that is the order to be adopted.
Okay. And a motion for approval.
So moved, I'd like to approve the municipal order 2017-10.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
A second, Councilman Copley. Any other discussion? All in favor, Speaker, I would say aye.
Aye.
What I was referring to there earlier was those more of the five jobs, like in the city hall section. It's Greg's job, Mary's job, and Philip's job. That's when that consolidation has occurred. Now, there's some of these others that were approved on the budget that will come into play for what I was talking about, for the consolidation of the savings on the payroll. Just those five jobs, we've consolidated down to three. Okay, I've got one more municipal order, number 2017-11. Job description is amended.
Mayor, those are the department heads' job descriptions that we've added. They will be responsible to update the website, the new city's website when it goes online. So each department head will be responsible for keeping their department's section of that website updated. And those job descriptions now reflect that, and those are the job description amendments in that municipal order. And I don't know when it's going to go online there, in the phase. Right now, they're in the movement from the transferring information over to the new website phase. I've asked Hannah when that will be done, and she's, they're doing it right now. She will get training once it goes online, and then she will train, she will train the department heads on how to do those updates once it's on. But that's what those job description amendments are, to reflect that.
Do you want to read?
I'm going to read this sign here.
Three more pages.
One line, I think, one of them.
It's only one line.
All right, Tim, go ahead.
Yes, sir, municipal order M 2017-11. Municipal order amending the job descriptions for the city of Barstown originally established in municipal order number M 2015-16, and amended in municipal orders M 2016-04, M 2016-09, M 2016-19, M 2016-20, and M 2017-10, whereas several job descriptions for established positions require amendments that address exempt status, supervisory updates, and changes to the special knowledge, skills, and abilities category for each department head. Now therefore be it ordered that the city of Barstown, Kentucky, that the job descriptions attached here too be adopted in full to represent the true and accurate definition for the position available as an employee of the city of Barstown.
Okay. And a motion then to approve municipal order M 2017-11.
So moved. Sorry, go ahead. You're right.
Moved to adopt municipal order M 2017-11, amending the job descriptions for the city of Barstown.
There we have a motion, councilman goes, and a second.
Second.
Councilman Cullen, any discussion? All in favor, six of five saying aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. I think that concludes our agenda, unless anyone else, the council, any of the house members who have already before the council this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, and a second.
Second.
Second, the council. Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.